Today is David's birthday, birthday, birthday. Today is David's birthday. Let's count the years away.
I, I bet I don't look like I'm forty, huh?
You look good. You look good.
You're not, you're not a year over seventy-two.
No, not at all. I try to just ignore the birthday, but it comes up. I have to like start taking it off of Facebook and stuff like that.
I'm still looking for our agenda. I found the agenda changes. Now I gotta find.
Yeah, I know Rose had said there was a change.
Yeah. This is driving me nuts. Stola, stola, na shi, a she, a num, stola, stola, na shi, a she, a num, stola, stola, na shi, a she, a num, na shi, a num.
Yay.
You know, we're gonna, I taped that. We're gonna post that all over Facebook and.
It's May fifteenth from Maryland Pole. I found it.
That Liz I'm looking at?
Yep.
Hey Liz, I see the bridge of your nose to the top of your head. That's it. Oh, yeah, my girl.
Now you see it?
I got you, baby.
She has her jammies on. That's why she's a.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, I don't. No, I put a, no.
I should have put, I should have put a shirt on. I, I got a T-shirt on. I apologize.
Get, get your bow tie on Mel.
Yeah, I put a bow tie on with my T-shirt.
Without, without the collar. The clip-on.
Yeah.
I, I had a Star One O Four pink T-shirt on. I was doing yard work. I was pretty messy, so I look presentable now.
We wanna, we wanna see the real you.
Dave, when I texted back to you yesterday, that word should have been philanthropic instead of philosophy. Sorry about that.
Okay, I get it. I, I've done that too. You, when you're texting, you're like, oh, they'll, they'll get it. Close enough.
We only had two cases yesterday, but we got seventeen today.
Yeah, that was, um, not good to hear. I didn't.
Yeah.
You know, people, people think this is a joke. They, they just think, oh, I'm, I'm going out. I'm, I, I've seen so many people with no mask, uh, huddling up in the group. It's just ridiculous.
Mel, I like your response to the person who was wanting the playgrounds to be open.
Oh.
Your response, you know, that you don't want to be responsible for somebody. And plus, don't they understand that these directives come from the state? I saw that Harbor Creek Township passed a resolution today to open up completely, which I thought was not good timing on the day we get seventeen. And the State Health Department was late in uploading its data, but it has us with one additional case. Um, those numbers don't always agree, but sometimes they're ahead of us.
I couldn't get on to the Zoom meeting today. Um, I've done it before on my phone, but today it wasn't letting me, so, um. I tried to get ahold of Frank during it, but he, he wasn't picking up. But he, um, he resent it to me later on this afternoon, so hopefully. I don't know what was going on. I got into the first part of it, but couldn't get into the meeting.
Like the rest of the gang, the rest of the gang is cutting it pretty close.
I wonder where they are. Seven o'clock. There's Ed.
Did he be on the phone? Oh, okay. There he is. You know, there was two things that I've been talking about, uh, probably for, for the longest on my, um, almost on every term that I've served is the, uh, the acoustics in the chamber is terrible. And I suggested, you know, look into the lower end of the ceiling, so it's not bouncing all the way around. And that felt on deaf ear.
Well, there, there could be some, there could be some panels, Mel, like some acoustical panels, you know, that are designed to architecturally fit in, so they, they would, they would knock down some of that echo.
Oh.
You know, and.
We could get panels that smell, smell, Mel Witherspoon on the back wall.
Oh, yeah.
Architect among us.
Yeah, then, then you issue everybody some darts.
Have you been down at the, uh, library? The, um, we did some acoustical panels down there for the teen center. They're like actually hanging from the ceiling.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. But there, there, you could make the, make it into, um, something that could, could add, uh, some attractiveness to the space also, so, um, it can kind of do two things.
Yeah. You know, that and, and the office and the caucus room in the wintertime, we freeze in there. There's, to me, there's no reason, no reason why we can't get our heat system corrected. I mean, it's sometimes it's freezing and the girls sit there with their coats on. I don't know. It did, and I've tried that with, uh, three mayors. And nothing ever happened.
So Mayor Joe's on the, on the line now, Mel.
Yeah, I see him.
You should try it with a fourth mayor, I think.
Yeah, well, you're the fourth one. I haven't tried it yet. We got.
What are you waiting for?
We, I, I'm waiting for some of this mess to clear up. Cause that, that wouldn't be a priority, not even with me.
Oh, I'm, Mel, can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
We, we passed a, a contract about three or four meetings ago where we have a company that's coming in and they're gonna start with one of the floors, um, working on the furnace system, working on the computers and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have all five floors done though. And I'm gonna tell you.
Well, then, uh, so. Now that, your words are good enough to me.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna say without me going on the computer right now and looking up the name of the company, um, yeah. David Mulvihill did a lot of research on this along with a local engineering firm, and I'm not gonna remember that name either. But you guys did pass it about a month or two ago, and they're supposed to start, you know, whenever they're allowed in the building. And they're gonna work on all five floor.
Okay, well, tell them we'll start on the first floor first. And wait, work their way up to heaven. Hey Kathy.
Yes?
It's after seven. Uh, you wanna go ahead and kick it off?
I, um, I see Rose is coming on. I texted Jim and I texted Frank.
Well, the, the meeting doesn't start till seven thirty.
Right, but this is caucus.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, I definitely wanted to set a meeting, sorry.
Yeah. So, uh, is, and, um, I had an inquiry from Freda about whether the caucus will be livestreamed. It is a public portion of the meeting. Does anybody know?
I, um, texted that to Frank earlier. I don't know if he got it.
Okay.
It's not on, I've got the channel on here, uh, and you, yeah, usually caucus isn't, isn't, uh, well, people can come in, but not many people come in usually.
Right, but it is in the, in the interest of transparency, because if it, if we were meeting in person, they would be able to attend. They should be able to hear what we discussed in caucus if we're. Do we have anything we're gonna talk about in caucus, Kathy? Do you know?
No, I doubt now.
If it's not, if, if it's not live, they're able to be viewed at a minimum. I, I note that it's being recorded. That recording is public.
We already have a problem with, which I'm gonna talk about at my committee report, because I spent probably way more time than you can even imagine working on this, um, question of, uh, citizen access, so. I got a lot of, um, good information and suggestions, but I have it all compiled in a timeline now as to how this discussion evolved.
Hey Liz.
Yeah.
You know, you only have five minutes for your committee report.
I have my phone here. I'm gonna set my five minutes. I do know that.
I'm still, we're still waiting for, uh, Winarski Keys and, uh, Brzinski and Chambers.
We were ready to start caucus, to start the conversation.
Okay, uh, that's what I was asking. So we're gonna put it on the TV in about, uh, three minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So we can wait to start till then. That's okay with council. It's really up to you guys, but you're right. Public should have access to it.
Well, I was thinking since we had, um, a study session with John Bookner and John Persinger, um, perhaps we could, uh, do the other authorities and have, uh, study sessions with the Port Authority perhaps and, uh, airport and, um, EMTA probably would be glad to talk to us.
Okay, our pictures are on screen. There.
Kathy, I think that's a good idea, especially I think, um, you know, kind of set in priorities, which ones you would want to hear from first. I would think, you know, with the Port Authority, with the discussion about what's gonna happen with the Bayfront, um, and the iconic connection. I'm not even sure what the deadline is for responses to that plan. Do you know?
Um, I don't know if that was the end of May.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm trying to find it now, so. Oh, here, okay. See.
That's the one I would be interested in, um, the most. And then I know, uh, EMTA, you know, would be able to talk to us. Um, Jeremy's pretty, uh, flexible and willing. And, uh, then the airport. And the zoo.
Oh, good one, yeah.
Long as you don't bring a snake.
Counsel, you are now live on TV and on social media.
Thank you, Frank.
There is an East Side Connector survey on Survey Monkey, and I don't know, but I can't say when the deadline is, when you're supposed to complete it, but the survey is still active.
Oh, that's good. Paul, do you have anything you want to tell us?
Uh, not tonight, no.
Okay.
I mean, I guess if, nothing, any questions about contracts, purchase orders or bills? Going over to my desk.
Paul, my question is, um, and I had texted Renee about this, the contract with Susquehanna is to get numbers on both the upfront lease and the idea that possibly we would restructure our own debt, correct?
Correct.
Two different. Pardon me?
Yes. Yes, two different, am I on mute or? No.
No, you're on.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, okay.
And is Chris Groner on? I thought he was on earlier.
I'm not sure who's on there. I'm not sure who that is.
Paul, what is their deadline to get that report done, Susquehanna?
They're working on numbers as we speak. We've been in contact with them pretty much three days this week and three or four days last week, so they're constantly working on different things. I'll say whenever the mayors come, Paul.
Yeah, we keep. We keep giving them different questions and direction, and they're good about getting back to us relatively quickly.
Okay.
So I hope we can, uh, bring, bring something to you in the next week or two here.
There's our president.
Good evening, everyone.
Jim, do you have anything to bring up in caucus?
I don't know. The biggest thing, uh, I just want to, uh, and what I will mention at the meeting was, uh, the, uh, what was it? Under the, uh, transfer contracts or the contracts themselves with Susquehanna, I believe that's definitely a good move in the right direction when we're talking a, uh, decision of this magnitude. This is the, uh, probably one of the biggest votes or decisions I'm gonna have to make being on council, as well as, uh, many of you all will realize, because, uh, what we decide with this water lease deal, uh, prepayment, uh, is going to affect this city for years to come, many, ten, twenty, thirty years to come, so, um, to get a independent company advisory group to come in, I believe is definitely the right choice. I appreciate the administration, uh, coming through and doing that for us before we, uh, go forward in this, uh, very, uh, very, very important, uh, process. I don't know if anybody else has any comments on that, but, uh, I believe, uh, out of everything we're gonna do tonight, that is one, just one step that, uh, is very important moving forward with the water lease deal.
Paul, can you reiterate that Susquehanna is not going to advise us which action to take, whether to restructure or to go with the long-term lease? At least that's my understanding. They are not in a position to say, do it this way or do it that way, correct?
That's, that's correct. They'll, they'll lay out the various scenarios numerically speaking, and then it's gonna be up to the mayor and count, I'm sorry, to, to make that decision.
Thanks.
And they are doing a good job of answering any questions we have, though.
Yeah. In the, I'm sorry, mayor.
We'll, and we'll present what we think is a good recommendation, we hope, at some point in the near future.
Yes, in all the conversations we've had with them, they're, again, they, they have no skin in the game here. They're, they're laying out, well, if you do this, this will happen. If you do that, that will happen, you know, trying to get us to look at all sides of the, both sides of the coin.
Like I had mentioned, we're talking an independent, we're not talking a local company. We have, have talking, or talking with somebody who has worked in with the city prior on different bonds, so they're familiar with our economy up here in Erie and, uh, the city's, uh, financial issues as a whole.
Yeah. Yes, Jim, they worked with the sewer authority on two different bonds. They actually helped get the sewer authority out of a couple of those flops they'd entered into back in two thousand three and two thousand four, and then they helped the, uh, general fund with the two thousand eleven issue we made, we did.
Paul, why did we not, um, I know it's only for twenty-two thousand, but why did we not have an RFP for this? I know that there are only a few companies that do this, but I, I also know that PFM has an arm that also does this type of analysis.
We're in caucus with our colleagues.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's the professional service. We had done business with these governments, like I said, three times in the past, and it, and it worked out well in those, in each of those instances. And again, they are independent to the transaction.
Does anybody know what the outcome of the lawsuit was? Um, I, I know that the, that, uh, the federal lawsuit that Midland Township filed against Susquehanna was dismissed. There are also an action pending in Dauphin County Court. Um, does anybody, Ed Bessa, he's on mute. Do you know what happened with that lawsuit? Remember, I, I had brought this up at our studies, our finance committee meeting. I'm not casting aspersions at all on Susquehanna. I just want you to be aware that they were sued.
Yes, they were sued by Middleton. And the Middleton Borough President at that point in time is the senior manager with PFM.
I do not know the current status of, of any act.
The, in the federal, uh, judges react, the, the federal judges dismissal lawsuit emphasized that it was the burden was on the, uh, Midland Township, um, to know what they were signing when they signed that agreement. Um, the, the, the issue arose over a surcharge that was, um, being enacted after their, uh, whatever they did, they leased, uh, uh, you know, leased their water system, so I think it's just a cautionary tale that Jeremy Blue, uh, Sam said, every, every step we take is, is really important to know what we're doing.
I think we're still on.
Yep.
So Paul, um, how long will that take then, if we've, you know, vote on it?
Well, it, it depends on which road we travel down. If, um, as we've talked about, if we go into, you know, if we go into an agreement with the, with the water authority where there's, there's a lease repayment with the waters, we're gonna have to have their board to accept any agreement that we make, and then you as the board accept that agreement also. Uh, if we were to issue bonds on our own, we'll have to go through the process of getting ready and then issuing an official statement and then selling bond, so it, it, it's gonna take a little bit of time. It's gonna take a little bit.
I just want, we are, we're already, they're already doing work for us, even though we haven't approved the contract, it sounds like. Am I right?
That's correct. When we spoke at the last.
That's right.
Meeting, then the finance committee meeting, we, we asked council as a group if it would be okay to move forward with this in the end of time, and at that point in time, council gave us the approval to do that.
I remember that now.
Yeah, but that was not a vote. I, I, let's make sure that we're doing, we don't, we did not vote at a, at a finance committee meeting after our regular meeting that day to proceed with this.
No, you don't vote at finance meetings.
Don't press. This, okay? I mean, you assumed that we were gonna approve this tonight, so you've already been billing hours or whatever. They've been billing hours, even though we haven't officially acted on this. I, I think somebody, some people might need some, uh, I don't know, rudimentary, um, lessons on how council actually is supposed to function. Or maybe I'm the one who needs the lessons. Maybe we do just sit at a, a committee meeting and say, yeah, go ahead, you have our approval without a formal vote.
Mr. President.
Yes.
We, we got a lot of background noise, uh, coming out of city council when someone's speaking. I don't know where it's coming from.
How about now?
It's a continuous echo.
Maybe I got my bone too loud.
Whoever's not speaking, turn off your, uh, mute yourself.
Whoever's not speaking, turn off your.
Is that better?
Yes.
That sounds better, yes. Good. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Rose?
Yes, dear.
Um, did you get Freda's email?
Um, did you get Freda's email?
I did.
Okay, thank you. And you, we'll read that for public comment then.
Yes, I will. It's citizens to be heard.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did we get any other emails?
Just the one.
Just the one, okay.
Is there anything else on the agenda, council, that we would like to discuss before we go into session?
Michael Keys, where did you get your, um?
Name in the streets.
Your guard.
Name in the streets.
You want to talk about it? Yeah. He, he's going to explain how he's. I'm sorry, guys, if I, while other people are talking. We did not talk about, at all about the two loans for the enterprise and, no, we did not talk about that. We did, I did print up a memo we got on Friday before our agenda.
This is Michael Keys, just for future reference, you know, like Sam was saying, we should actually vote on something before we find out that it's already been printed in the newspaper. I'm referring to the loan for Logistics Plus.
Council members who weren't a part of us at the beginning, I mentioned that since we had John Bookner and John Persinger with us at a study session, perhaps we could go through the other authorities. I'm really interested in the Port Authority's plan and, like Liz mentioned, how that connects in with the Bayfront.
Yeah, we, we should align the dates up and just get them scheduled and kind of make it a, a standard procedure to keep informed and communicate.
Yes, David, that was definitely part of our plan, and they were all in agreement with us. It's just these unforeseen circumstances that have happened in the last two months sort of put us back a little bit.
I understand.
And they're all willing to come and talk to council and give us updates on each, each issue that may come forward.
Yeah, yeah, the more communication, the better. So, yeah, I, I agree, Jim.
Thank you. And by the way, thanks for getting both John Bookner and John Persinger on that Zoom meeting. I still would like to hopefully get them in person in the future. Just seems that, that face-to-face or the, we may get a little more out of it sometimes than we do these Zoom meetings, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, to tell you the truth, I've heard from a lot of people that did listen in, and they, they very much appreciated getting an update and hearing what's going on. So I, I was kind of surprised a lot of people did listen in, a lot of, a lot of people let me know.
That's great.
Yeah.
This is Michael Keys. As, as a rule, kind of going forward, while we may not have actual influence over some of these groups, it'd be nice if they invited or selected, like we have liaisons with the city, that they have, that we have liaisons or people from the city council actually appointed to some of these quasi-government groups so that we can stay on top of it for ourselves.
And actually, Michael, we do, once again, I think it just falls upon some of the happenings of the last two months that has put us a little farther apart from some of these discussions or updates. But council on the whole has been very much involved, and, and if we weren't, we've had to ask each, whether it be the Port Authority or the Housing Authority or what have you, sewer authorities that give us these updates.
Yes. Yeah, I wasn't referring to just the ones that we have actual authority with, but I mean, like, you know,
Yeah, it would be, it would be a good thing if they extended, you know,
the hand to city council to some of their meetings and the regional chamber.
And they are, and they have. It's just in these trying times, it makes it a little tougher, but if things don't change sooner than later, it'll be more of a Zoom-type of conference meeting that we would have. Thanks. That's all right, I hear you. I'm hearing it. All right, I believe, is there anything else, council, before we officially start our meeting? Rose, I think we will begin our meeting then.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, May 20th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Winarsky, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
This evening, I would ask that we all remember not only my cousin Jimmy Schwartz, but a city employee for over 38 years in our police department, great guy. Passed within the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. Just want to ask that we keep him in our prayers.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the council meeting of Wednesday, May 6, 2020, and bills for payment on May 15th and 22nd, 2020. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. There are no repository sales, Mr. President, so I'll go ahead and do the citizens to be heard.
Thank you.
Okay, I received an email from Freda Tepfer, 1738 West 23rd Street. Comment to City Council, 5/20/2020. Object to the city not acting in a timely fashion to provide an opportunity for the public to comment to online city council meetings. This failure is peculiar, given the large number of government organizations managing to do this without problems. The technologies in use provide an opportunity for the public to sign into meetings after pre-registration and to be given microphone access when called on, or to be similarly comment on a conference call. Failure to provide this opportunity is failure to provide the public accommodation of public comment to people in a fashion that does not intimidate or exclude those who do not express themselves as well in writing. It goes on to say, "I attended the city council study session with the Erie Downtown Development Corporation and Erie Downtown Partnership. I am very concerned with the indications that the EDDC and EDP Perry Square Alliance position themselves as the people who get to decide how Perry Square will be managed, improved, changed. I was denied the opportunity to attend a Perry Square partnership meeting. I am concerned that a group that opposes a water fountain in Perry Square and choose to build towers that create unsafe conditions for pedestrians who are blind and visually impaired positions itself to control or manage how Perry Square appears is managed, et cetera. Perhaps you have not noticed how there are no benches in the park that are positioned to allow people to converse with each other. Perry Square belongs to all the residents of the city, not just downtown, and certainly not just a downtown organization that denies attendance at the Perry Square Alliance meeting. I request that city council take all measures to assume that all activities and plans for the planning, changes, management of Perry Square are the product of open public involvement with all the residents of the city. EDP says that EBTEDP has started an effort in cooperation with the city looking at the current and future use of the square and how it can serve and even be safer. Potential adding of additional green space is something that would be really helpful to us to support the food trucks, outdoor activities, the creative use of the space, the creative use of art, all things we are now looking at, and what we need to do is continue to work with the city to develop this space and others for the betterment and opportunity of us. And under the safety premise that's the opportunity, how do you use this space to be safe but to be engaging and connected? This is verbatim from the study session. The effort that the EDP is discussion, discussing may be appropriate, but it should not be the only basis for deciding how Perry Square is developed and managed. I was also concerned that the Erie Downtown Partnership is concerned in finding human feces when they have presented the placement of a porta potty in or near Perry Square. Where else can the unsheltered homeless spend the day? They need seating. Restrooms are many blocks away at West 12th Street, Freda Tepfer."
Thank you for your comments, Freda. There was no more, Rose?
No, that was the only one that will also be included in the council minutes.
Thank you.
I'll go on to ordinances for final passage. Council File 16158, Official Ordinance Number 142020, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $10,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Be Received from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund for Utilization in the Flagship Commodore Fund. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16158, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 142020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass, pass Official File Ordinance Number 142020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16159, Official Ordinance Number 152020, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $300,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure There of PCCD Pal Violence Reduction. By Mr. Brzezinski, second by Mr. Keys, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16159, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 152020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 152020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16160, Official Ordinance Number 162020, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $34,977 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure There of 2019 Justice Assistance Grant. By Mr. Brzezinski, second by Mr. Keys, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16160, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 162020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 162020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16161, Official Ordinance 172020, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $5,000 from Appropriated and Anticipated Revenue from CSX for the Purchase of iPads. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, that Council File Bill Number 16161, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 172020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 172020, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for First Reading. Council File 16162, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $20,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Be Received from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund for Utilization in the Flagship Commodore Fund. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Ms. Allen, that City, Council File Ordinance Number 16162, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16162, by a seven, nay zero, on first reading.
Thank you.
That'll take us into new business. Whoops, wait. I gotta hold back that. Okay, that'll take us to new business.
Do we have a?
I would like to-
Yes, we have a motion to move the balance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any separations?
Yeah, I'd like to separate number one, and new business.
All right, moving to balance, Ms. Allen.
Rose, I'd like to separate under contracts, number one, please.
Which one is that, Jim?
The Susquehanna Group Advisory Contract.
Okay. Any others? Okay, moving the balance. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. Um, I just wanted to make note to all of you that I don't know if you got Marilyn's email on the agenda. All the loans were classified as Enterprise Zone Lo- Loan Funds, but they are actually all flagship funds. And also, bit number 14, under new business, the resolution for the Safe Senior Rides that was pulled by ECMD because they are out of business.
that was pulled by ECMD because they are out of business. Okay, resolution number one by Mr. Brennan and second by Ms. Allen. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the City of Erie Administration and other private city departments and stakeholders work with Erie City Council to create an ordinance that will specify or amend policy or procedures for naming, co-naming, and renaming of City of Erie streets. The objectives of the ordinance are as follows. Number one, enhance a sense of community involvement and public participation within the city. Two, establish a uniform and comprehensive process, a formal notification of proposed naming, co-naming, or renaming. Three, ensure that naming is consistent with the values, priorities, and characteristics characteristics of our city. Number four, encourage and recognize the dedication of individuals who have shown exemplary citizenship. Number five, establish a consistent approach and specific criteria for reviewing applications which may include the following. A, application for street naming, criteria for renaming a street for an individual, criteria for honorary street designation, B, written notifications to affected property owners, C, administrative review, D, for review materials installation, D, historic preservation review, E, planning department review, street name length and length of street to be renamed, and F, City Council final approval and public hearing. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, could I?
Yes, may I start? Please.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, with the resolution that I put forward, there were a few questions and, you know, I apologize, it needed some clarification. So I I sent out an email as soon as I started hearing some of the questions yesterday, trying to clarify. But kind of the main essence of the clarification was that there was really two separate processes. One is for an honorary street naming, which we want a much simpler process. You know, that would just be something that would include an application with some type of narrative that kind of describing the the whys and the who's and street location and length and in some type of fee attached for that. And then the other one would be much more, a more detailed one where we'd actually be renaming a street. And I'm not sure even when we've last done this, if it's happened in the past, it hasn't been in my time on council. But it would include everything that's listed, you know, that Rose had noted there. Again, I'm not saying it would include, what I'm proposing is that it could include. So the request is that we we look at this and and what would make sense and what would be the best fit for our city, you know, given, given the renaming that that, you know, we plan to do in the future. And also, I want, I just want to note, and I forgot who else had discussed this, is that you know, we should have some type of database for these streets so that we, you know, maybe it could be something that could be used to kind of help tell the history of Erie if we we have many streets named after many people, kind of tell us the history of our citizens and the history of our city. So I think it could be a very positive thing to have some type of database. And I think part of that would be if there was a written narrative when it's submitted, then that could be on the record for, you know, the why, why this street is named after this, 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 the citizen who has given so much to our city. So I just wanted to clarify, and thank you so much. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, David.
All right, roll call.
David, I just wanted. Can I, can I just say something?
Sure.
Can I talk?
Yes.
Can I talk?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I just wanted to explain why, why I seconded David's motion because of my frustration when people had started to ask about street renaming last year. And I couldn't find any, any document that said this, including in the Streets Department. You know, where are, where are the streets that are already named? I've been to a number of ceremonies, they're always impressive. And I really liked David's idea about adding to the city's history. That's a really positive way of looking at it. And we can even, you know, probably do the work and go back and find those streets that have already been named after people. I've already made an informal list. I don't know if I have them all, but I really like the way of framing this resolution, that this is a way to not only establish a process, but provide context and help to document our history going forward. Thanks, David. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Did you hear me, the rose?
No, I didn't, Mel.
I said no.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, by Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Susquehanna Group Advisor, Inc., eight thirty, Sir Thomas Port, Suite one fifty, Harrisburg, PA, to provide financial consultant services regarding an analysis of the proposed transaction, excuse me, between the City of Erie and Erie Water Works not to exceed the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. Discussion?
Yes, I don't know if council has any comments before I go?
My comment was that I'm going to vote yes for this, but I want to point out that I I asked in caucus two things. One is to make sure that the public understands that this contract is to provide information, not just on the possible prepayment of the lease by Erie Water Works, but also to run the scenario if the City of Erie would decide to restructure its own debt independently of the Erie Water Works lease. And my second comment is, I understand that this is professional services. I, as a journalist, covered many meetings and all kinds of jurisdictions where, you know, governmental bodies say, we're going to give a contract because it's professional services. We've dealt with this group before. I also understand that that this is a specialized field of study. I still think because of the magnitude of the financial transaction that we will eventually be doing, that it would have been a better idea to do an RFP before this contract was just given to a group that had worked with the city before. I also want to point out that the city is already engaging in work with Susquehanna Group, even though we have not formally approved it. We were told at the caucus that we gave the go-ahead to the Finance Department to do this. And although there did seem to be a general consensus that this was a good idea, we do not vote in, I'm sorry, not in caucus, but in a finance committee meeting. That was a public meeting, but we did not hold a formal vote on that. So I just think it's really important to adhere to good best prac- best practices in seeking out contracts and executing them. But I'm looking forward to reading and digesting the information that Susquehanna Group gives us.
Thank you. Mr. Keys?
Well, I think that, you know, because of the time, the timetable and the fact that we are making special acceptance to bring this forward, I think it's a good thing. I believe the threshold is fifty thousand dollars for a contract. And so it's not meeting that threshold. It's within, you know, the discretion of the administration. So who most want to go forward in this fashion? And so I don't have the expertise in this area, and since they do, we're gonna have to rely on somebody's expertise. And the sooner we can get this information, the sooner we can make a decision on these other things that are time sensitive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. And part of the reason of myself separating this is just so the general public understands how important, how this water authority lease prepayment deal that's a great potential for us is probably going to be one of the most important things this council ever votes on. We're talking close to a hundred million dollars. That is going to be in play in this city for twenty to thirty to forty years. And we got to get this right. So I appreciate the administration, the Finance Department, they did concur with me the, as president, on what their thoughts were, and I had no problem on our end. It was brought up at our client finance meeting, and there really weren't any major objections because not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars sound like a pretty good analysis we could get for a hundred million dollar possible project. So I see project, but a commitment or a transaction. So once again, I this is big for us, and we have some very big decisions coming for us down the road on what may happen after we get the answers from this consulting firm. And once again, I appreciate the council and the administration to reaching out to an independent advisory group that is somebody local that may have some eyes with what. Thank. Call for the vote, Rose?
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
All right, ready. Thank you, Rose.
Whoops.
Mr. Brennan, they're telling me it's your birthday today, so I guess you're the lucky guy that gets to go first. Happy birthday.
That was supposed to be a secret. I can't believe it. I was trying to ignore those, but thank you. Thank you for the birthday present. First of all, I attended the Erie Parking Authority Board Meeting on May twelfth regarding their situation with COVID and everything going on with the pandemic. They are okay currently financially. They believe that they'll come out of this pandemic even a stronger organization with some of the things that they're doing currently. Of course, as you would expect, their income is lower than budgeted. And the expenses, their expenses are also lower also. They continue to work on their maintenance projects at the ramps. There's a hammet lighting, a hammet ramp lighting's going on, some elevator work. No one was furloughed on their staff as of this meeting last Tuesday. As for the upcoming, actually, we had a past brainstorming meeting, the the city and the Erie Parking Authority, I think it was back in February. There's discussion of continuing those discussions, and I know they're working on some different options to present at that meeting. And of course, I think everybody's heard about that parking regulations are back in order, and I think the the twenty-minute free zone in front of businesses is is going to go on through through summer. Just a comment about the study sessions we just had with the EDC and Erie Downtown Partnership. I believe it was a productive meeting. I think we learned about their current initiatives and also their projects they're working on. You know, how COVID has really affected their operations. And, you know, one of the main reasons why we want to have these meetings is to see how council could assist and, you know, of course, the more communication, the better. And as was pointed out earlier, we do want to continue to have future meetings with with these groups and also other other authorities. And I did mention this before, you know, we want to plan a future discussion with young Erie professionals. They wanted to just connect with council, and I'm looking at maybe late June for that. I know we have some other ones that are coming up, so we'll have to coordinate that. A positive note, the Preservation Erie has given their awards out this year. There's twelve award winners selected. There's three categories. The categories are Preservation Excellence, Adaptive Reuse, Design Excellence, and Education Advocacy. And the City of Erie Historic Preservation Task Force was actually selected for an award this year. So thank you to the the mayor and council for for creating this task force to create a preservation plan for Erie. Of course, there was eleven other winners. I'm not going to spell them all now, but I know they're being published on 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 social media. And I think that is it. Actually, I just want to say thank you, council, for passing the the resolution for the rename renaming. You know, I think the current absence of the actual, an actual process is needed, and and this could be positive for our city in in trying to create a database and having this information on hand for for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Allen?
Okay. Let me just start my timer, but it's, Mel, don't worry, it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be anywhere near five minutes.
Have we ever?
Okay, tonight for my committee report, I'm going to update citizens on my attempts to offer more platforms for your voices to be heard at city council meetings while we continue to meet remotely during COVID nineteen. First, I want to thank your efforts to hold our feet to the fire, to provide additional ways for citizens to offer their views during the public comment portion of our meeting. Erie focused and individual neighborhood plans all stress the need citizen engagement. In addition, you're to express yourself as enshrined in the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, which guarantees freedom of religion, speech, press, assembly, and petition. The pandemic guards have presented new challenges to government as we attempt to conduct business. I applaud City Council's first decision to allow and encourage citizens to make comments via email. Indeed, according to the Pennsylvania Municipal League, governmental bodies are finding out through, quote, trial and error about the best ways for citizens to comment at public meetings. But email is not sufficient. The Pennsylvania Office of Open Records says that governments provide as many ways as possible, including video interaction for citizen comments at meetings. We have that capability. We are meeting right now on Zoom. Erie County Council and Erie School Board allowed citizens to comment via Zoom. Why can't City Council? Allowing citizens to have a voice in how government works is fundamental to democracy. Hearing your voices is especially vital right now when we are limited in our interactions with each other. It is likely that social distancing and precautions to protect public health during the pandemic will continue for quite a while in Erie. We are in the yellow phase, but there were seventeen new positive cases of COVID nineteen today, and experts such as infectious disease physician Dr. Howard Nadworny have stressed the contagion is more likely to happen in indoor quarters. Vulnerable citizens should not and should not have to risk their health to make their views known. I'm asking the city's media specialists to provide me with a report on how County Council and the Erie School Board are using Zoom to allow citizen comments at their meetings. If the majority of City Council then chooses to disregard that information, that is your decision. But you cannot make an informed decision until you have the facts about how to use this technology to give citizens their turn at the podium, even if it's an electronic podium. And I didn't write this, but I think the fact that we only had one citizen speaking today through an email is indicative that that email alone is not working. We know how often we have people lined up to speak. We know when somebody is at a meeting times, they say, hey, if that person had a good thought, I'd like to amplify that. So that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
I still have a minute fifty-seven seconds left, but I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President.
How are you?
Been busy. I was on the phone meeting with HRC and HRCA and Zoom meeting with the centers on how they're providing their summer programs for the kids this year with meeting the Health Department requirements and found that very informative, and everyone's trying to do their very best that they can during these times. I noticed Ogden, Utah, Dave. I noticed um, Ogden, Utah, uh, Dave charged twelve thousand dollars for uh, a city uh, honorary sign, but I don't know how many they had to make, you know? If it was just, uh, sounds like it would be more than one block area because twelve thousand is pretty, but it was installation costs. And um, Liz mentioned uh, how she's uh, going with the history. I am too. Um, going to uh, do the history behind the honorary signs. We could have um, a little display of it on City Hall sometime, uh, maybe with a, a piece of paper and a map of all the different uh, streets that are named with the history. My daughter had um, when she was in seventh grade, an assignment from Sister Mary that took us on a historic walk and presented all the different historical signs in the different neighborhoods, which I love because that was a family thing and we did it through um, walking with different neighborhoods that we had never done before. Um, I'm meeting people um, daily with my mask on as uh, I go along to do the neighborhood uh, assessments with um, the uh, Erin, Carrie, and Crystal. And uh, I don't do it every day, but um, it's a lot of fun uh, meeting different people and seeing what they're doing to their house. A lot of them are fixing their houses up and their yards. Um, I did have a conversation with a gentleman the other day that didn't have anything to do with this. And, but he was saying how uh, in a bad, in a negative way about uh, where he lived. And I think everyone um, should know that your place is special. Like, don't um, knock it down. It's, it's your oasis where uh, you get to live that American dream and uh, we need to build each other up and help each other out in neighborhoods and, and maybe help uh, clean them up with community uh, litter time, litter pickups and uh, like in the summertime, how the church groups come and help paint houses and take care of porch issues and things like that. That's what um, neighborhoods are all about, trying to help each other and um, I know this is, you know, a time with social distancing is hard, but um, just try to be safe. Be kind though. That's the whole thing. Um, be kind to your neighbors. It's hard, you know, the domestic calls are going up um, at times because people are together more, but um, try to find a peace in your backyard or front yard or porch or uh, bedroom or something and, and just have like a little time where you can be at peace and spread that peace to your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schoff. Mr. Brzezinski?
Hear me now?
No.
Says unmuted.
Frank, help.
Company, uh, out of here.
Anyway, I'll keep loud, hopefully. Do you hear me, Spoon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It says the speaker's off.
I think we got it going. First off, I'd like to thank Kathy for her daily updates. I do have a concern though. Paul's doing a heck of a job, but he always tells us that when he's okay with finance. I'm just wondering however he can be fine in finance when we don't have a stadium that's bringing in any money or is that, we don't have Civic Center, all these things that we anticipate revenue for isn't there. I would rather know the hill that we have to climb now than wait till October and have it back at head. Uh, I'm sure Paul could do that for us. He likes to keep sunny skies, but I think it's something very important. I also would like to throw out to my brothers and sisters in council, maybe have a special fund for all those cancellations that we've had to have now. Not gonna have Celebrate Erie, that amount of money that was set aside, Celebrate Erie should be put into a fund. Let's get that money built up so we can do these things down the line. The money will be sitting there. Uh, that's the biggest thing. Mrs. Spoon, where'd you get your haircut? Because I sure could use some help. And happy birthday, Dave. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brzezinski. Mr. Keys?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I don't have an official report, but as everyone else, I was on the call with uh, the EDC and the Downtown Partnership. And I'm glad that uh, we were able to uh, meet with them. Um, I just have a comment. You know how we receive the new hires every week in, in, every month, but um, that I was alerted that uh, we're hiring our summer help for eight dollars an hour? And I know it's adding additional costs, but I don't think that that's a good look for the city, for us to be barely paying over minimum wage for people who are gonna be working for us even part-time. So, I hope somebody will be looking at that in the very near future. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Uh, just to follow up on Councilman Brzezinski, uh, and there again, uh, Mr. Lichtenwalter, uh, at this point, we don't know what type of impact the unemployment and this COVID virus is gonna have on our city finances, but to Mr. Brzezinski's point, I guess, I don't know if we can possibly have a some type of data or something on what our shortfalls may be by not only, say, the amusement tax, like he was talking, the Ball Field Convention Center, but I think the bigger one's gonna be the earned income tax with uh, people that are unemployed. Um, I understand we should uh, unfortunately, we're fortunately in one breath, but unfortunately another, we're gonna save money from Celebrate Erie. We are going to uh, save money from uh, our summer uh, league programs and uh, I guess, the one point here, and I know this is the second meeting in May, maybe by our June meeting, we can have maybe some type of assessment where we possibly may be at if things still go on for another month or two or three or a shorter time, just where possibly our financial situation may be because, believe it or not, once again, that's that's where that uh, free lease agreement with the Water Authority may come into play also, whether we want it to or not, but we still need to know some more financials. And uh, hopefully, Mr. Lichtenwalter can get that to us. Um, or at least some idea of that, um, our uh, June finance. Other than that, that's all I have this evening. Uh, Mr. Mayor, are you still with us?
I am here. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good to, good to hear you.
Thanks. I can see you too. Yeah, it's great to see everybody. Uh, got a few things I wanted to mention. Uh, first of all, we had a press conference today, the first one in two months. It was so nice to actually do another press conference again. Uh, we covered four topics. Uh, first one was that we, that we announced the summer paving schedule. We're spending about four million dollars paving streets throughout Erie and uh, may, the press has access to, to all that. You guys can, of course, as well have it. Uh, we talked about, there's been some controversy about some uh, public works employees uh, who work in the streets. People have seen them work on the streets without masks on. And what we, what we've learned is uh, there's some dangers to wearing masks with some job, particularly if there's a, if you're working around equipment or if uh, you know, a lot of masks. I know anytime I put a mask on, my glasses fog up. Uh, and I, I just deal with it, but if you're doing something with machinery and doing a, a difficult job, that can be very dangerous. So actually, the State's Department of Health has, has issued a statement that uh, you're not, in, in your job, you don't have to wear a mask if it impedes your vision. If, if you have a medical condition, that doesn't allow you to do that, or if it creates an unsafe condition. Uh, and so uh, many of our uh, street workers especially, you'll see them out there, not with masks on, they should stay six feet away from everybody else, but, and we had a street worker, I think it was yesterday, that was unloading a, a big truck and fell six feet and ended up in the hospital as a result. So it is a dangerous job and, and we don't want a mask to, to, to make it even more dangerous. Uh, we're gonna try those up face shields like Michael has on tonight, uh, and see if those work, but there's some concerns about those as well. Uh, we also renewed our uh, discussion about the park. There's uh, been a lot of controversy lately about people in the park in group. And I reiterated that, you know, people can't, can't use our basketball courts. They can't use our tennis courts, can't use playground equipment, skate park, picnic areas. Uh, there should be no group exercise and they can't use restrooms in park. Uh, but they can run, walk, bike, uh, and hike in, in, in through park, uh, and still get exercise that way. Uh, and then I read a proclamation which uh, declared uh, this week, National Public Works Week, and uh, and I've been there now almost two and a half years and uh, the first time I've really honored our public works employees. I'm really proud that we finally did that. I'm just, I'm disappointed it took us so long, but it's a, it's a great thing. They do great work. And uh, in the daily message, uh, trying to think that, I think it's tonight's daily message. Uh, we're actually honoring the garbage worker. Uh, and at the end of the, the message is a minute, but then afterwards for another minute, we uh, broadcast all the names of all of our garbage workers. I think there's about fifty-seven of them, about forty-one are part-time and they're two supervisors. So, uh, tomorrow's message uh, will be about Tom Lennox. This is some really good information from a police perspective. Uh, police have received that two-year state grant that will pay Tom Lennox's salary and benefits. And he can spend a hundred percent of his time working with PAL uh, as, and as a recruitment officer. So I think this is a huge opportunity for us to increase the diversity of our police force. It's been very frustrating to be honest, for the last two and a half years. Michael Outlaw and I have been working very hard and uh, it, it, you know, we, we've got more non-whites taking the test now, but still not many. We've had a couple that have come in in the last couple of years, but we, we're still nowhere near the balance that we'd like to achieve there. So uh, I'm looking forward to what Tom will do in the next couple of years here in, in his role. Uh, he won't have to be on the street anymore. And because that's all state money, uh, we're gonna hire another officer to be out on the street. Uh, so instead of Tom splitting his time between both, we'll have a full-time officer working the street. In this grant lasts two years. At the end of the two years, what, what we'll do if we can extend the grant or get more money is uh, when a police officer leaves, then we won't replace to get to the correct number of uh, employees. I also went to the Erie Downtown Partnership meeting this morning and uh, it was a good meeting, good conversation as always. One issue came up that I know Kathy Schoff is very much connected to and uh, I could tell you that Renee Lamis and Kathy Rosnick have been working hard on this and that's like what's going on with the homeless now since the COVID nineteen started. And the fact that there's no place they can go to the restroom during the day. You know, there's places they can sleep at night and there's restrooms there, but uh, I could tell you so many members of this board were giving examples how messy and, and terrible downtown is. For instance, Christopher Friday said that they have fifteen parking ramps, Parking Authority manages. He said his staff spends until noon every day power washing all the stairwells in the parking ramps because they're so full of feces and urine. He said you can hardly even get the smell out of it. Uh, because again, the homeless are looking for a place to, you know, relieve them, relieve themselves. And uh, we are going to put together a, a meeting. As I said, Kathy and Renee especially have worked really hard on this, but they just, you know, there's no easy solution to it, but we are gonna get a group together, including the Downtown Partnership, or the County Health Department, us. And we're trying to talk it through and see if we can come up with something. Uh, my understanding is in Perry Square, for instance, the, again, there's a lot of feces laying around and uh, even though there's not many people downtown now, you know, the downtown is in worse shape than, than ever in terms of that. So, uh, I had a meeting, uh, just made a Zoom meeting last night with about a dozen African-American clergy, uh, led by Lamont Higginbottom. And Kathy Dahlkepper participated as well. And uh, a lot of them were getting ready to start church again. And they wanted kind of our opinion. And remember, there's a division between church, church and state, so we can't really tell the churches what to do. All we can do is make recommendations to them, what, what we think is best for their parishioners. And as I said, I know a lot of them were really talking seriously about opening back up, having the people back in. Uh, but I, I learned today that what Kathy and I said, it really changed most of their minds. And uh, there's another meeting tomorrow night. I'm gonna participate in at seven with the Catholic Diocese. Bishop Persico is running that. And he gave me a brief update, uh, kind of, actually, it was about a half an hour conversation earlier today. And I could tell you, he's taking COVID nineteen very seriously. Again, they'd like to get people back together praying again and uh, but, you know, he takes it very seriously. He wants to do it in a safe way. Uh, another thing I, I just mentioned is uh, we, we, we are evaluating the impact of COVID nineteen on city finances. I know a couple of you commented on that. And I think in June, to give you an update on, on where we are, uh, we do think it's gonna impact us. We uh, I don't have a number yet and I don't see it being uh, crippling, uh, but it, it, you know, it may cost us a million or two million dollars out of our uh, out of our uh, reserve. You know, we've got about ten million dollars in reserves now and that's what these are for. We'd rather not spend it obviously, but, but we may have to. Uh, with regard, Michael, to the eight dollar an hour uh, summer help, uh, those are mostly summer workers only. They're not full-timers. A lot of them are college students that are looking for a summer job. Uh, so uh, you know, we certainly can talk about that, but uh, these aren't people that are depending on this for their livelihood. Let's see. Well, Celebrate Erie, a couple you mentioned Celebrate Erie also. And uh, all the money used in Celebrate Erie is donated. None of it is city-sponsored. None of it is tax money we've collected. It's all money. Uh, Celebrate Erie is run by a nonprofit called Cafe. So people can donate to Cafe, get a tax deduction if they itemize their expenses. Uh, so none of that is city money. Uh, some people have already donated to it. And I could tell you that Aaron Longkey is working on a uh, some virtual things to do with that money. There's still, because obviously we, we, you know, we want to entertain people in some way, so they're not getting bored, sitting at home and doing things they shouldn't be doing. Uh, so that, that's the way we're gonna, and we didn't collect nearly as much money as we ne- usually do because, you know, COVID nineteen started a couple of months ago. But we do have some and we're looking to uh, put that to good use here. Uh, one other thing, very briefly, I wanted to update you on is I, I did start my radiation actually yesterday for the prostate cancer. And uh, so far, I feel absolutely the same. It has no impact on me. The doctor said if I'm gonna feel any difference like tiredness or soreness or redness, that's probably gonna be a couple of weeks of radiation at least. But so far, I, I feel no different and uh, things seem to be going well. The most challenging thing is I have to have a full bladder for the, for the fifteen minutes I'm getting the radiation. And uh, the timing on that is uh, very difficult, but so far it's uh, worked out pretty good. Uh, now, I think one of the most important things we need to do, this is my last thing, I apologize if I've gone on too long, but as, as Jim mentioned, the restructure- I apologize if I've gone on too long, but as Jim mentioned, the restructuring of our debt is probably one of the biggest things financially that any of us will ever do. First of all, I want to say I'm very proud. You took another big step in doing this year's budget back in November and December when you made our pension assumptions reasonable. And we're not going to have $1 to $2 million increases in pension costs anymore because of that. In fact, at some point in the future, we're going to see our pension costs coming down. Pension costs have doubled in the last five years. That's not going to happen again. So you solved that, the one of the three big problems we have. We're hoping and we're getting some, we're getting a lot of information. And to be honest, it's a little difficult even for me with 40 years in finance to digest it, but we're, we're going through it. And it's looking pretty positive. I'm not sure exactly what direction we're going to go yet. But we're going to get that to you as quickly as possible and give you as much time as you need to think about it. I'm really hopeful that in the next week or two, we can present to you with some detailed information on how we propose restructuring the debt. We will have Susquehanna part of that meeting also to answer questions, give you details. And the third area we need to really attack is the, our, what we pay our employees as well as all the benefits that they get. Our employee costs go up 10 to 15% a year. That's been going on forever. Our revenue goes up less than 1% a year. You don't have to be a mathematician to figure out. That's, that's a recipe for disaster. But that's what this city's been living with for 30 years. So we're trying to change that. And again, the pension decision you made will help the, hopefully, we're going to come up with something with the debt to eliminate that problem. And as you know, last year, we had a good negotiation with the firefighters. They're getting a 0% raise this year, 1% next, 1 and 1/2, and 3, and 2 and 4. We're negotiating with the police right now. That's kind of in the early stages. We started that before COVID-19, but it kind of got delayed, starting to pick back up again now. So we're hoping to have success with them and then the next two unions, the next two years. So I apologize I went on so long, but hopefully all that stuff is helpful to you.
Thank you, Mayor. One question, you mentioned that all Celebrate Erie is no cost to the city. Wouldn't police overtime be involved and maybe some of the other city services on setting things up? You know, that may already be figured in our budget that we may save on by not having.
Yeah, I think you're right. I don't think police overtime. But you know for sure, Ed?
I do not.
I don't think police overtime is on, is in there. So you're right, that would certainly be a significant savings there.
And it may not be a whole lot, but still some part of their overtime benefits as well as any other city possible workers that we have overtime figured in our budget that they may not be getting because we're not having Celebrate.
Right, that's right.
But there again, that can be analyzed and Paul can even let us know that in June, what percentage of the overtime went to Celebrate Erie.
I have an overtime question also. I think council members will remember that I've asked about this any number of times about whether we have a policy or fees for political rallies. I would not be surprised if the person in charge of the White House wants to come to our area. And I think we should be prepared to figure out that somebody who stiffed us the last time should have to pay for overtime. I hope he doesn't come. I think he's been a disaster. And he's been a disaster in trying to, in not leading us to fight this pandemic. But don't be surprised. That's why he's itching to get the whole country reopened. And I think we ought to be prepared, not just for that.
Liz, this is an political stunt right now.
I don't care. It's
I understand and we don't have to yell. Please don't yell. Please don't yell. It's, we don't have to get into politics here.
Political statement. I'm a politician. We, but no matter who comes, we need to have a plan for what the charge would be if a candidate would come here.
You start and finish with that. You don't have to get into the whole
Yes, I do.
Your opinion of
92,000 people have died.
Liz.
And you are not wearing a mask.
I have it right here. Nobody's, nobody's around me. Please.
Oh, boy.
We're, we're, we're social distancing.
Oh, boy. Talk about not having a voice.
Relax.
I'm not
Mr. Betsa.
Tell the woman to relax.
Mr. Betsa, do you have a? Mr. Betsa, any comments? I see you got a haircut the same place Mel did.
I went to Mel's Barber. I have no comment, though.
Oh, my God.
With that, we're going to close. Thank you all. You can, right now. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brzezinski, want to make one comment?
Mr. Mayor, hear me? Want to make a comment about garbage collectors? Those men are called sanitary engineers.
Okay.
Do one heck of a job. So let's give them credit for it. Not garbage collectors, sanitary engineers.
Sounds good. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
All right. Bye-bye.